Can I ask everyone to please stand for a pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM. And we are in the Alex, uh, I'm sorry, 8:00 PM, the 30th day of November, 2016. And we're convening in the Alex O'Connor Auditorium. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, the president of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, superintendent of schools, Mr. Kenneth Kopaz, assistant superintendent for personnel, Dr. Gary Maeda, board secretary, Mr. Leo J. Smith Jr., assistant superintendent for business, Mr. Dr. Dennis Degnan, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and Mitchell Piscopo, our board counsel. The meeting's open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Finnerty.
Present.
Trustee Garillic.
Present.
Trustee Lawande.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Present.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Willbeck is absent. President Broderick.
Here.
Mr. President.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was promptly posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
At this time, we will start with our consent agenda. This evening, our consent agendas are Resolutions 1 through 49. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I motion.
And a second?
I second.
Mr. DeAngelo?
The correspondence that's listed, uh, one is, uh, Mayor Davis. Can you read that?
Read it into the record?
Yep.
Sure.
Well, I want to know if it's the one inviting us to the City Hall.
Yes.
All right.
It's in, it's in the packet.
I don't need that one written. Could you read Karen Weeks', uh, one into the record, please?
Sure. Okay. Dear Mr. Lawande, uh, this was CC'd to me as board secretary. As a teacher, parent, and taxpayer in Bayonne, I ask that you please release the current offer, period. I have contacted Alan DeAngelo and asked that he show us the offer and allow us to vote on it. I have received no response. I believe that if the current offer is released, teachers would fight for the opportunity to vote on it. Please consider releasing this offer to the teachers.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck is absent. President Broderick?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to Resolution 50. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education wishes to reaffirm its commitment to provide every student with the skills to be college and career-ready in STEM-related fields. And whereas the Bayonne Board of Education encourages and supports its students to use the skills acquired to compete in STEM-based competitions. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is aware that 10 Bayonne High School students competed in the 2016 New Jersey School Boards Association Steam Tank Challenge at the Atlantic City Convention Center on October 26, 2016. Therefore, be it resolved that this Board of Education wishes to commend the following participants, along with their science teachers, Alexander Cuziola, Sandra Stamos, and Maria Loy, and bringing honor to themselves in the Bayonne School District at this new innovative STEM-based research competition. Anub Amarias, and would you please come up? Philip Etier Ibrahim, Jacob Rodriguez, Arum Chandre, Kevin Lozaro Vasquez, Mark Youssef, Victoria Chavez, Philippe Mikowski, Cisco Espinoza, and Alicia Powell. And this is by the committee of the whole.
Why don't we come right behind the trustee?
Excuse me, I'd like to just say something about this group. Um, this, this event happened down in Atlantic City. I happened to be there and I went, basically, I spent the day at this area, this STEM Center. And it was run by the Army, I believe. And, uh, I watched some of the ones in the morning. And, and they were pretty good. You know, and I'm saying, there's something about an electric window and this and that. And the staff, there was different people that were there from different things. And they were saying, they'd ask a couple of questions and then it was over. And then these two groups came up and one had a submarine, the other had the locker. I mean, the people, the, the questions they were being asked were so far superior to the ones they were asking the people earlier. One person said, what do you have to get a patent on this? How to get money to back it up? I thought I was in Shark Tank for a second. So I was just, but you know, not only were they impressive, I think they were impressive among the group that was certainly down there. [Laughter]
Why it looks like I'm part of the group?
Oh, she has it. Okay, we're good. Thank you. We'll write your comments.
Well done. Great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Very good.
Nice to see the presentation made.
Congratulations again.
Yes. Uh, 51. Whereas Abigail Isaac Jr. attending Bayonne High School, honor and distinction to herself or family in the school district by achieving a perfect score of 800 on the Math SAT II aptitude test. Whereas Abigail's achievements are a result of her dedication and commitment to her academic, academic studies. Now therefore be it resolved that this Board of Education wishes to offer its heartfelt congratulations to Abigail on her achievement of a perfect score of 800 on the Math SAT II test. And this is by the committee of the whole.
[Applause]
Good job, math genius. There she goes, right front and center, right here. Thank you. All right, can we look closer? I tried.
I hope I got 800 under 2. [Laughter] Congratulations. It's phenomenal.
Not sure if that was picked up on the mic. I guess Beffle. Okay. 52.
Uh, Dr. Maeda, before you, uh, continue?
Sure.
I also would like to congratulate our students and our teachers for doing such an outstanding job. I was there also in Atlantic City, being very proud of our students. Actually, I initiated the entire project for them to go down to Atlantic City because I knew that they had the talent under the leadership of our wonderful teachers to shine and actually excel in the competition that they were a part of. And I just want everyone to know that each student received $25 gift certificates that they can bring to BCB Bank. Actually, it's a gift from BCB Bank to each and every one of you, recognizing the excellence of our students here at Bayonne High School. And also Isabella received that $25, uh, $25. And we're very thankful to BCB Bank for all of their generosity to our students. So thank you very much.
Okay, 52. Whereas Juana Saberito has brought honor and distinction to the Bayonne Public School and the entire community by being selected as educator of the year by the Bayonne Hispanic Association. Whereas Ms. Saberito was honored as a distinguished Hispanic at the Bayonne Hispanic Parade Gala on Friday, October 14th, 2016. Whereas Ms. Saberito has been an educator for 18 years and served as a bilingual teacher for the Bayonne Board of Education for most of those years, and now serves as a bilingual ESL coordinator for the district. In the Bayonne School District, she is a member of the shared decision-making team, the safety committee, the district evaluation advisory committee, and the data team. Ms. Saberito earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in 1999 and a Master of Arts in Urban Education in 2011. She holds New Jersey certifications in Spanish, elementary education, bilingual education, and supervision. She was named Teacher of the Year at her school in 2009 and was inducted, inducted into the Sigma Delta Pi National Spanish Honor Society as a New Jersey City University. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the outstanding achievements of Ms. Saberito, be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education wished its heartfelt congratulations to Ms. Saberito. And this is by the committee of the whole.
[Laughter] Congratulations. Congratulations.
Again, we offer congratulations to Ms. Saberito for this wonderful distinction.
And joining her at that particular event and parade in recognition was our own trustee, Christopher Munoz, who was the Hispanic Man of the Year. So I'd like to acknowledge Christopher Munoz, too. Congratulations.
Okay, number 53. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is desirous of utilizing a portion of funds under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part B for the 2016-17 school year for the purpose of addressing disproportionately by providing academic support to grades K to III general education students in an after-school program setting. Whereas the superintendent of schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, has recommended that the following staff be assigned to the Literacy Boost 100 Book Challenge at a rate of $20 per hour for six hours weekly to be paid from federal IDEAAB 2017 grant from below-listed schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the following personnel be assigned to the program. And this is Resolution 53. It is on that back bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
54. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Education recommends school districts to create a three-year local technology plan in order to be eligible for state and federal E-Rate aid. Whereas the district-wide plan should be, uh, should include the following components: educational goals and measurable outcomes, implementation strategy, and staff development activities, online assessment compliance, provisions for acquiring, connecting, and maintaining equipment for sustainability and growth, a description regarding how the technologies are to be integrated with existing curriculum and technology activities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education does hereby make a firm commitment to the implementation of a three, of a local three-year technology plan for 2016 to 2019, and will strive to support, to support the implementation of this plan based on funds available. Be it further resolved that this Board does hereby approve the Bayonne Board of Education three-year technology plan and authorizes Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, superintendent of schools, to submit the plan for approval to Monica Tone, our county superintendent of schools. This is subject to further action as may be directed by the Board. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to accept this resolution.
And a second?
I second.
So we have a motion and second. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
54. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Education recommends school districts to create a three-year local technology plan in order to be eligible for state and federal E-Rate aid. Whereas the district-wide plan should be, uh, should include the following components: educational goals and measurable outcomes, implementation strategy, and staff development activities, online assessment compliance, provisions for acquiring, connecting, and maintaining equipment for sustainability and growth, a description regarding how the technologies are to be integrated with existing curriculum and technology activities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education does hereby make a firm commitment to the implementation of a three, of a local three-year technology plan for 2016 to 2019, and will strive to support, to support the implementation of this plan based on funds available. Be it further resolved that this Board does hereby approve the Bayonne Board of Education three-year technology plan and authorizes Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, superintendent of schools, to submit the plan for approval to Monica Tone, our county superintendent of schools. This is subject to further action as may be directed by the Board. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to accept this resolution.
And a second?
I second.
So we have a motion and second. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
No.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck is absent. President Broderick?
Yes.
55. Whereas it's been determined that a vacancy exists in certain disciplines in the Bayonne Public School District. And whereas the superintendent of schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, has recommended the appointment of the below-named staff pending criminal history review. Therefore be it resolved that pending fingerprint verification, the below-named staff are hereby appointed at the salaries adjacent to their names and on the effective dates. Jessica Nowagrotzki, teacher of mathematics, I'm sorry, Mr. De, well, let me finish and then I'll call on you, Mr. DeAngelo. Teacher of mathematics, $52,790. Matthew Crivey, teacher of science, chemistry, $57,625. They're both appointment dates December 1st, 2016. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. DeAngelo?
For the chemistry teacher, it says the salary is 57,625. What step did you hire that teacher on?
Step 12, Mr. DeAngelo.
Step 12?
Yes, sir.
They worked in the public school systems for 12 years?
15 years, public school experience, three years, private school experience.
In New Jer, in New Jersey?
Three years in New Jersey, 12 years in Maryland, uh, two years in Bayonne High School.
I missed something there. Three years in New Jersey?
12 years in Maryland.
In Maryland?
Yes, sir.
So we're giving credit now for out-of-state, uh, teaching in public schools? Or is that on a case-by-case basis?
It's case-by-case, by need, sir.
Right, by need. I got 700 members that don't make that much money, and they've been here 12 years. And then you hire somebody on step 12. I, listen, that person is probably going to be a member of this union, so I represent them, too. It's not the person. I laud that person for being able to get step 12. But when I have people that have worked here for 12 years to get that money, it seems very unfair. I would think that then you would make a policy, at least, to give everybody credit for all the years. Because I've just gotten two phone calls where the teachers want to come back to you and talk because they did have seven years' experience, the one teacher, and was put on step one. So it's not been consistent. If that's going to be the policy, the Board should review it, put the guidelines down. If you have so many years in public school, you'll get that credit, or you won't, then nobody should get it, or it has to be public school, or it can't be private school, whatever your criteria is. But it should be across the Board for everybody. And I think the Board should consider that before you hire somebody on step 12. Thank you.
Okay, number 55. I have a motion and a second. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck is absent. President Broderick?
Yes.
Number 56. Whereas based on enrollment of students in various grade levels and education programs throughout the school district, it is necessary that the following staff be reassigned with, within the school district, or newly-appointed personnel be assigned to the following positions for the 2016-17 school year. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, the attached assignment reassignments are hereby made effective 2016-17 school year. All assignments, reassignments are made without change in salary unless otherwise indicated. Jessica Nowagrotzki is going to Washington Community School, teacher of mathematics, and Matthew Crivey, Bayonne High School, teacher of physical science. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I will second.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck is absent. President Broderick?
Yes.
Number 56. Whereas based on enrollment of students in various grade levels and education programs throughout the school district, it is necessary that the following staff be reassigned with, within the school district, or newly-appointed personnel be assigned to the following positions for the 2016-17 school year. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, the attached assignment reassignments are hereby made effective 2016-17 school year. All assignments, reassignments are made without change in salary unless otherwise indicated. Jessica Nowagrotzki is going to Washington Community School, teacher of mathematics, and Matthew Crivey, Bayonne High School, teacher of physical science. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I will second.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck is absent. President Broderick?
Yes.
57. Where it's been determined that there's a need for secretarial clerks in the Bayonne Public School District. Whereas the superintendent of schools has recommended the appointment of the below-named secretary clerk at a salary adjacent to her name. Maria Durak, 12-month secretary, $33,818, effective date December 1st, 2016. Be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools, board president, and secretary of this Board of Education are hereby authorized to execute said contract on behalf of this Board, and the Board Counsel approve same to form. Be it further resolved that the above-named personnel report to the Office of Superintendent of Schools for assignment. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I second.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck is absent. President Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Bro, uh, Mr. President, that's all I have for this evening. But I do have three cards that are filled out. I'll start with Mr. Joe Wyatt, North Plainfield, New Jersey. I might have misspoke. When you come up, you have three minutes. It could be a question. It could also be a comment. So I'm sorry if I did not make that clear. So you have three minutes.
It's always said that we, it's always announced that we, if we can ask a question. And I'm, it never is said if you have a question or a comment. And the truth of the matter is, there is no place in this school district to make a comment. If you offered me a chance to come and talk and get my ideas across, I write letters. It takes months, five months for you to decide to do something on a letter, or even let me know what you're talking about. And this three-minute thing is ridiculous. So, you don't, you really don't want to hear what we have to say. That's why you limit our expression.
You have two and a half more minutes, if you'd like. All right. Mr. Gene Woods, 182 Zabriskie Avenue, Bayonne, New Jersey.
I might take up a little bit extra time on the Joe Wyatt rule.
Maybe you could have that two and a half minute.
So, I'm starting off with get it done. I'm not looking for a response back today, anybody to say anything back to me. I just need action. I need things to get done. I'm here tonight to speak about the battle between adults over 802 people's livelihood. And I'm going to talk about how it's impacted my family. Because I'm going to go personal and not talk about everyone. First, I should be at home right now with my wife and my son, helping take care of them, because both of them have major health issues right now. However, I'm here again because we seem to not be able to get adults to work this out. So here's my dilemma. Eight of the 10 years that I've worked here, I've worked without a contract. That means my wife and I are short $24,000, which we could have used to put towards a house, because after the birth of our son, who was born three weeks early, he was born with a low, really, really low platelet count, which caused him to be in a NICU for nine days. Blood transfusions, hematologist visits, steroids, nights and days back in the, in the hospital. Then, we think we're in the clear, and a week ago, we get three more things to find out about our son. His spleen is enlarged, his fluid buildup in his groin area, and his skull is closing too quickly. So on top of that, we still have weekly visits to the doctor. My wife has to go by herself because I need to manage my time in case something really, really bad goes on. Two weeks after our son came home, we were told the place where we live is being sold. We made an offer to the gentleman, but he didn't want it because he wants to build a home in South Carolina. And also, we didn't have enough money to put up for what he wanted because we don't get paid enough. Because rents in Bayonne, as many of you know, are outrageous. If we were to rent an apartment, it would cost us anywhere from $16,000 to $2,000 a month, which we can't afford because we have a child, a dog, and a washer and dryer, and those are three strikes when you're trying to rent a place. So that means we have to buy. Now, we've been trying to find a place to buy, but it's been very hard to come up with that money again because the contract hasn't been settled. We figured out, because we had to go through mortgage brokers, what our liquid value is worth. It's $26,000. That's for two college-educated people, $26,000. It, it's pretty sad because my dad didn't graduate high school, and he's been able to own two homes. Yet, two college-educated people can't do that. I've had to pick up three extra jobs to make up for this. I had to pick up a job over the summer, working for NJEA. I had to pick up a job doing security after school. I had to pick up a job now, adjunct professoring at Kane University. Yet I come to work every day. I work harder than I ever have because I made a commitment to my profession. Because that's what adults do. Honestly, every single award, because I'm packing up my house, because the place is going up in, in January, and houses in Bayonne are going pretty quickly because people are picking them up because of all the condos. I pa, I was packing my awards over the weekend, all the stuff in my room, and I just thought I would trade every single one of those in for the contract to be settled and the money to be given to us. This is so difficult. And I know it's my Eight of the ten years without a contract. We can't keep doing this. We just can't.
I give this to Wood.
Next up is Ms. Tina Cassias, three center lane.
I was surprised by this, so I just wanted to say something. On behalf of my daughter and the thousands of students that she has taught over the years, I'd like to sincerely offer my heartfelt thanks to Mrs. Dwyer. Beyond education, she's been an inspiration. Mrs. Dwyer, you will be sorely missed, and we're wishing you a happy, healthy, and relaxing retirement. You certainly deserve it.
And our last speaker is Kishav Vasyanvada from Steamworks Studio, Piscataway, New Jersey. Somebody came in from Steamworks Studio, going once? Okay. Mr. President, that's all I have.
We have any other questions, or?
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion by trustee Luande, a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Gerilic. So a motion and second to adjourn. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Gerilic?
Aye.
Trustee Luande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck is absent. President Broderick?
Yes.
It is eight thirty-three.